Uh.
The Plan B.
The Plan B, you've put back, um, the gypsy moth spraying. And that's it. You've still reduced, uh, well, you're already out of the forestry program, the, uh, uh, the brush pickup. So that's gone.
We're not out, basically. We're gonna do it in-house, but.
You, you, you made that cut two weeks ago.
Right.
So then eighty-five thousand stays as a reduction. Uh, mosquito abatement. There's a reduction of twelve thousand. Gypsy moth is back in. Sidewalk maintenance, there's a reduction of fifteen thousand. Education and training, there's a reduction of fifteen hundred. Other equipment, there's a reduction of twenty thousand. And conferences and meetings, there's a reduction of fifteen hundred dollars.
Question on the other equipment. What other equipment?
Other equipment is kind of a catch-all line item for, uh, chainsaws, weed whips, and more expensive items like concrete saws, um, post pounders, any equipment that per se, we don't have a replacement schedule for like we do for vehicles or the larger equipment, the things that are a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, two thousand that need to be replaced, we normally do it through that line item.
In your opinion, Jen? You know our equipment better than we do. What do you think? We, should we put ten thousand back in?
I would agree that that number needs to stay up in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range at bare minimum. We could survive a year at the four thousand dollar livet that I put it to. But again, in years to come, we're gonna need to amp that number back up in order to replace aged equipment as it breaks or needs to be replaced.
So you think with fifteen thousand?
At bare minimum, correct.
Any other thing, education and training here? Same thing, anything that we need to keep licenses or whatnot, or these we can get away with?
Basically, education as far as certifications, I try and keep in Public Works Administration. So this education is training is solely for our street department individuals for any upcoming snow plowing training for the year, any sort of anti-icing training that, uh, we can make them available for. None of those is mandatory, none of those they have to have for any continuing education. It's all local seminars that staff may go to for any particular, um, streets or public works-related continuing education for their own edification as it relates to Public Works Street Department. So no, none of that, I tried to keep everything CEU-related or certification-related out of administration for continuity's sake, and then left all the other items, uh, basically in their respective budgets. Minus vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance still has their, their ASE certification, which we'll get to later.
And mosquito abatement, I think that's one, that was brought up earlier, I think that's one we should keep. But I'd like to see, uh, what everybody else is thinking on that one. Any questions? On anything on, uh, Public Works Streets, on Plan B, Plan A? Aldrin, Roy Wesley.
The Kembleon contract, where does that come under?
Kembleon contract comes out of five different line items, uh, one being Public Works Administration, building and grounds under that, um, some money comes out of that. Um, there's Central Services has a portion of it. Um, the train station commuter parking lot fund has a portion of it. Waste water and then, um, storm water maintenance, uh, storm sewers.
So where would you like to, I, Mr. Chairman, where would you like to talk about this here or some other department?
Want to talk about it right here, Jen?
I'm comfortable talking about it now, that's fine.
Go ahead.
Um, the contract is for how much?
Uh, we haven't signed the contract yet, last year's price, which they're holding current, is seventy-four hundred.
Seventy-four hundred? And we do the detention ponds in all the properties in the city, correct?
Basically, yes.
Do you think we could do that in-house?
Absolutely, we could do it in-house, whether or not we have the same level of service, um, as far as the same level of product being put down, no, we couldn't do that, but yes, we could do fertilization program in-house. We have the licenses necessary for that.
On, on that note, doing in-house, we already took out the brush pickup. That's more work for your department already, so something's already gonna suffer, tree trimming, televising. If we start doing, putting in something else in-house. There's gonna be other services that are gonna be cut, correct?
Not cut, we'll still try and get as much done as possible, it's going to take longer.
Might not get done.
It's definitely gonna take longer.
You gotta think about that stuff. Go ahead, continue.
Um, I, I'd just like to put this on hold and talk about this later on, but, uh, to give direction to, um, staff not to enter into that contract because we do detention ponds and stormwater, uh, had, had a recommendation before about using organic only on those detention ponds. And I was wondering if what their feeling is on it, but I don't think anyone could answer their feeling on that.
And, and the organic only, wasn't that like three times the cost or something? And they were only doing one or two, right?
Correct, it's two detention basins, the one on Oak Meadows Drive and the one on Addison Road. It's roughly about nine acres, both of them.
But the cost of those was how much more?
Doubles the price. Last year, we, or two years ago, excuse me, we spent thirty-five hundred dollars and now we're spending seventy-five hundred dollars. It does just about double or triple the price, price, excuse me, to use organics on those two basins comparatively to than what we were doing before.
Anything else? Go ahead.
What, what I'm saying on this is it takes, it would take a day for staff to do this. Roughly. And I'd like to put, I'd like to give direction to staff not to enter into this contract until we talk more about it. With stormwater, and I'd like to do it in-house. But I need.
When does that contract come up for signing? Before the budget or after?
We can sign it anytime.
But don't they start right away?
If the council wants to give us that direction, I would appreciate the full council giving us that direction.
The contract was for seventy-five hundred dollars, right? Okay. All right, can we make that Public Works next week's, next meeting discussion before we sign any contract?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Ron?
Yeah, but how about stormwater, is that gonna be brought up at stormwater too then?
Stormwater what?
There's a, a stormwater, uh, maintenance budget.
Sewer maintenance.
No, for the meeting for stormwater to talk about their organic. The agenda for stormwater.
Our meeting's gonna be before theirs, that's for sure. Our meeting's next week. If you're.
Okay, I'm, the, because they're a committee and I want their recommendation if they would mind not doing the detention ponds or whatever too.
Go ahead, Jen.
As I remember, stormwater originally made the recommendation to Public Works to amend those. Fertilization programs to include the organic compounds and the no phosphorus compounds. If council wants to give us direction to eliminate those, that's fine, but again, I would recommend those go back to stormwater for review.
We'll go to Public Works next week, Jen.
Thank you.
Aldrin, Eugene Wesley.
Let's get to, uh, Salt Creek stabilization. Why did that go up? Did we spend any money last year on it at all? Item, uh, line number four-two-zero-five-six, street maintenance. Did we spend any money at all last year?
You're talking stream bank, streetscape maintenance, four-two-zero-five-six? Yes, that's the, uh, stream bank stabilization program. No, we did not spend any money in that budget last year. This year, we currently are working with McGinty Brothers for roughly six, six thousand dollars on redoing some Ajax, installing some GeoGrid, uh, replacing some existing dirt. They're actually working on that project in two weeks, so that will come out of this fiscal year's budget.
So yeah, so after they did, I was under pressure when we installed that, that they proposed that there was a maintenance agreement that they would look at every year and then give us update where it was gonna be. So why, if we doing the repairs this year, why would we budget ten thousand dollars for two thousand and eleven?
My understanding is we budget ten thousand dollars every year. And if it needs work done, we have that money built in to do that. If the recommendation comes back from either McGinty Brothers, NCAP, any of the other firms we've used to look at it, if they recommend this work needs to be done, we have that money available. If not, it's just a placeholder year to year.
No, I just think we need to, because last year we didn't do anything on it at all, and we need to maintain that because that, that costs the city a lot of money and, and with grant money, that needs to be maintained. And I think it should be inspected once a year, and if that's a ten thousand, it's gotta come out there to be inspected once a year, then let it be, but they need to inspect that once a year. The other item, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, is let's get back to the mosquito, uh, embankment. You guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, and I know we, we contract for three sprays. All right. Now, the twelve thousand you add in the budget is for along Salt Creek if we have a massive flooding, okay? And if we need to fort spring, that don't mean we won't use it. But my concern is if you take it out of the budget. Because we did use that last year with all the flooding, or two years ago when we had all the flooding, that they did do along Forest View and all that, they did re-spray that whole area, which we did use it. My question is, I really don't want to take that out, I'd like to leave that back in, if we don't use it, we don't use it. But I know if we take it out, from push to shove, I'll be the first one if someone comes and says, my neighborhood needs another spring, and we say, well, we hacked it out of the budget, we can't do it. I'm sorry, I think that needs, that's a safety issue. We already know by up, up in, uh, Joe Cole's ward, was not a virus, was confirmed last year, was confirmed. Okay, we know it's been confirmed in my ward. It needs to be addressed, and I rather take, I rather cut something else and take twelve thousand dollars out. That's a safety issue I have. The other thing is the sidewalk maintenance. Would that not be if, if the sidewalks are up and someone trips over, is, is that what that program is? Or freshen my memory here?
Sidewalk maintenance, um, in Street Department, that is solely for replacements that Street Department either does due to a utilities restoration that's not coupled with a repair, or perhaps the utilities department no longer has additional funds to do restorations out of. Engineering Department does do a sidewalk replacement program.
But that don't fall here?
They do inspections as well. This is more appointed, one square here, two squares there program, while the engineering department is more, they do quadrants of the city and replace whole sections at a time. This just allows us to be able to either contractually repair sidewalks or have the ability to, uh, you know, replace sidewalks, aprons, et cetera, within Street Department.
Okay, I'm, I have no further questions.
Jen, I got a question for you. Last year, on the sidewalk maintenance, we spent, where were we at here, forty thousand? Or was that part of all, everything else you just said? Does that, did all get lumped into here?
Last year's budget, we spent thirty-seven-one-twenty-five. I believe Dave spent some of the money for the engineering department sidewalk replacement out of that.
Uh, that's what I'm.
Traditionally, the number prior to that in oh-eight is more like what is actually spent. If we do a few squares, it gives us a contingency, both if there's overruns in sidewalk replacements or we have overruns with utilities restorations, gives us an area that we can pull that money out of to do sidewalk apron, et cetera, replacement.
So, so far right now, what we're looking at, the gypsy moth was already put in last week, it was restored. We're looking at putting in the mosquito abatement for twelve thousand. And, and eleven thousand more, and you bring you the other, the other equipment up to fifteen thousand, so add eleven thousand there for a total of twenty-three thousand. Somebody have any questions on that? Against, for? Anything else on this subject?
Can you just give me a total of what we just cut out there, dollar amount?
Hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Hundred and thirty-two thousand?
Well, actually, twenty thousand was already gone, so really a hundred and twelve, the twenty thousand was put in. Right. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Just to, uh, clarify, so we're on the same page, um, I'm gonna start from the bottom of the list, it's easier that way for me. Um, that fifteen hundred in conferences and meetings is staying out.
Right.
Only nine thousand of that original twenty thousand is staying out, because you added fif, eleven thousand in for that. The fifteen hundred in education and training is staying out.
Right.
And the fifteen thousand for sidewalk maintenance is staying out.
Right.
So that's, that's what he has, grand total of twenty-seven thousand. Of those items that are coming out, twenty-seven thousand, correct? Yeah, the, the gypsy moth, eighty-five thousand, that was already factored into the original, original numbers, but, yes.
So we're putting in the mosquito abatement, twelve thousand, other equipment, eleven thousand. And where was the other four thousand, I missed something? I'm coming up with twenty-three thousand. Where do you get twenty? We're reinstating twenty-three thousand. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Next, vehicle maintenance. I will do a couple more, and we'll take a break. All right, vehicle maintenance.
The first two pages are the narrative and the organizational chart. The page one-thirty-seven is the target level, which is about fifteen thousand dollars le, fifteen percent less than last year. And that's basically due to the elimination of that supervisor that you all considered several months ago. Um, and then page one-thirty-eight, you seen this last year, is a request for an equipment mechanic, which I did not recommend. And then page one-forty is the line item, are the line items for this particular cost center. And although that totals one-ninety-six-three-thirty-three, we have identified twelve thousand dollars that can be reduced under Plan B. Uh, a reduction of two thousand dollars in education and training, and a reduction of ten thousand dollars in the line item entitled other equipment, that's a new vehicle hoist, and we're not gonna propose not to fund that.
Jen, right away with the education and training, we need to put any of this back in, or you feel comfortable?
Currently, the only items that were left in were for the ASE certifications, automotive service excellence. Um, the things that were removed were all the all-data training, any training for our parts lookup software that our staff currently uses, the international vehicle training for international, uh, and the, and the last name escapes me of the other vehicle training software that we use for all of our other vehicles. So there's no continuing ad for any of that, but it does allow for any ASE training for those certifications to be kept up.
And this vehicle hoist, I take it we have one now?
No. This was a new piece of equipment that would allow staff to remove large plows, salters, et cetera, without using the front-end loader or, um, the combination backhoe, which is currently done now. It's not the safest practice in the world, but it does work, it's been what they've been using for years. This is a A-frame style hoist with a chain lift on it that we proposed would allow them to do work on those heavier pieces of equipment without using either, A, that backhoe or that combination with the chain itself.
Kind of a safety issue. Workman's comp claim possibly in the coming.
I don't believe we're using it inappropriately, there's a safer way of doing it, this was proposing that safer way.
Any, uh, Aldrin, Eugene Wesley?
Well, I was just ready to say. Well, we're just gonna ask a question.
Let's take a break since two of the members have left.
You gonna make a motion recess? I'll make a motion, uh, reinstate the ten thousand dollars for a hoist due to safety reasons.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody opposed. Oh, I have a question? Question, all right. What, what do you wanna know? Vehicle maintenance. So basically, we're putting ten thousand back in. Two thousand comes out. All right, Willie? You got it?
I agree.
No, we're done, we already finished this one. You can, you can sit, you can, you can stand outside there.
Ten thousand dollars back in.
The ten thousand is back in for the hoist. We'll put in ten grand in back end. I know you have. The hoist is in. Don't let the door hit you. Education and training, Jen, you said we were good with the two thousand, correct? Or no, do we need to put some in? You had said we were good.
We're good with the certifications, again, if we want any additional training for the systems we already have, you know, that's where that level of reduction came from, was eliminating any continuing education on those, uh, systems that we have, but as far as certifications, we're good.
Ten thousand in, two thousand stays out. Next. Storm sewer maintenance.
Again, page one-forty-one and one-forty-two is the narrative. Page one-forty-three is the target level, which is twelve percent below last year's. And page one-forty-four is the line item. Now, in option B, you reduced education and training by five hundred dollars, zeroing that out. You reduced maintenance of storm sewers by twenty thousand, from thirty thousand to ten thousand. You zeroed out twelve thousand in other equipment, you zeroed out three hundred dollars in conferences, and you zeroed out five hundred dollars in miscellaneous. For a total savings in this cost center of an additional thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars.
First question on the pump and hydraulic upgrades, is that under the other equipment, the twelve thousand?
Uh, correct, that pump was a, um, a new additional pump that would bring our current storm water vehicle up to what we would consider effective in being able to pump out or, um, run hydraulically other tools off of that. It was basically a new addition, that's why it was listed in there. Um, currently, we don't have that capability now, we have it in the utilities division, but at times, sometimes that's tied up, perhaps on a main break, perhaps on other, um, water-related issues. So this was, this, this increase was basically to, to allow us to have another unit to be able to use, um, for another pumping scenario.
Is something you feel that we've had to use quite a few times in a year, or?
Most recently, uh, we had, uh, dual main breaks in the, over the winter time, and it would have come in handy, that's kinda where this suggestion came from and why we put it in the budget.
Storm sewers, it was originally forty, projected thirty, and then we took ten off of that. What does storm sewers mean in that category?
It, it's kind of all-encompassing, it's doing, um, any sort of work to, um, the storm culverts, ditches, parts associated with that, spoils associated with removing or transporting rock. Basically, anything storm sewer related, parts-wise, that we do in-house, or anything that we do as far as the storm sewers are, are concerned, it's kind of a catch-all for all those items.
So that, that's not including wastewater, it's just storm sewer itself?
Correct, just storm water solely, not water, not sanitary, storm sewer only.
Okay, 'cause with all the flooding we have, the problems we have, I'm just wondering if we're gonna cut back there, is that gonna give us any difficulty in increasing flooding or, or more flooding problems? It shouldn't, then, I take it?
Historically, we've only spent in the neighborhood of seven to fifteen thousand dollars annually anyway. That's why I trended it back when I knew that. I, I, I would say to be safe in the outlying years, I would bring that up past the ten thousand dollar revised mark down the line again, to bring you back up, but traditionally, seven to fifteen thousand dollars is where we're spending on there, that level just gave us the additional monies we needed if we, if we were gonna do more culverts, more, um, uh, reditching work than we have in the past.
Which we may need, actually. So just as long as you're comfortable with it, I was gonna say, if, if you think we needed, that's something we should put back in, but I'll let, I'll leave it up to you.
Maybe we bring the number up to fifteen thousand?
Instead of ten, just keep, reduce it by fifteen instead of twenty?
Take it to fifty percent, fifteen thousand?
Anything else, Aldrin Shockey? Aldrin Wesley?
My question, John, according to the way you wrote in the budget, continued hours, count number four-two-zero-eight-nine. I noticed you got in, uh, Project B, project to be eliminated. Uh, I noticed it solicits is continuing at hours. Is, is that something that we need to keep intact for these people to hold their licenses?
Really, there are only two employees that are pulled out of the storm sewer maintenance, or three employees if you count the supervisor. They have other education and training line items in their accompanying water utilities account. We've allotted for any water licenses, the, um, minus the supervisor, the other two employees are not water supervi, or, excuse me, water certified employees, so they have no continuing ad, just the supervisor does, so he can utilize either the utilities line item for continuing ad for his classes and certification or Public Works Administration.
Okay, I just don't want to cut any certifications out, that's my goal, thank you.
So if I get this right, are we, we're gonna keep, or we're gonna put back in, I should say? Five thousand for storm sewers and twelve thousand for this other pump and hydraulic upgrades, for a total of seventeen thousand. All in favor on that? Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No opposed?
Brad, could you give me a dollar amount on it?
Aldrin Shockey?
The overtime pay here now, you went from three to fourteen. Wait, where are you?
Where are you now?
And now you're cutting it back to eight. Four oh-one oh-two overtime pay on page one-forty-four. Are you comfortable with cutting that back? I, I would think with the history on that, it sounds like it's going up rather than. I would think with the history on that, it sounds like it's going up rather than going back down to 8. Second item.
Right. We basically went off our projected numbers and assumed that those overtime numbers were going to be the same. We've seen increases a little higher for the overtime. But again, in most of the utilities staff, which includes storm water, wastewater, and potable drinking water, there's three overtime line items in all of those budgets. It's very hard sometimes to break out when we do overtime. If you're working on just a storm sewer project, there's not a lot of overtime allotted for that. So traditionally, it's if there's flooding issues, sometimes that goes to Public Works Administration, sometimes, or excuse me, Street Department. Sometimes that goes to utilities, depending on what staff comes in, what normally they're paid out of where that overtime mark comes in. So when we had more employees coming out of that storm water, storm sewer budget, more overtime was spent because there were more employees. Now there's only two and a half employees. One's the supervisor. Traditionally, he doesn't have any overtime. We only have two employees. So really, the overtime line item now fits the number of staff that are in there.
Okay, so overall, though, you're comfortable with the figure you have for overtime for all of it?
Absolutely.
Okay, just to make sure you have enough.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, to answer Alderman E. Wesley's question, that's 17,000 that's going back in, and 16,300 that's coming out.
Anything else on that? Next, road and bridge fund.
Page 148 is the narrative. This is a standalone fund that has no impact on the general fund. Page 149 is the target level. It's going up because we're increasing the amount that we're transferring to the capital improvements program for some capital projects. Basically, we make about $200,000 a year in property taxes, and we use this fund to pay for traffic signs, roadway striping, road patching, gas lights at Royal Oaks, and then the balance to the CIP. It's a pretty clean fund.
I got a question. On the road and bridge, basically, we're carrying a balance that's 400 and almost 500,000. Is it just for road projects, basically, and whatnot? So when we do our streets, it's not going in, that comes out of CIP. So basically, we're funding the CIP with this?
Well, we're putting, as you see, we're putting $150,000 from this into the CIP. We could put more if you wanted to.
And they're just, why keep 500,000 in this account for something, catastrophe? I mean, I don't know.
Well, we really don't have anything else to spend it on, to be perfectly honest with you. We're limited in terms of the state law and what we can spend in this, and it turns out that we're making more in our property taxes than we have money to spend it on. And that's why we take about 100, we took $100,000 the last couple of years and transferred it to the CIP. And this year, we're proposing to move that up to $150,000.
Okay.
Just to try and bleed some of that off into the capital fund.
All right. Any other questions on it? Mayor Johnson?
Well, just to follow along with Alderman Police's thinking, isn't this something we should spend down to zero on a yearly basis and just use it in our road program? Because prices are going to go up every year. I mean, if you have 500,000 sitting there at 2% interest versus the cost of the increase of the road project at 8 or 10% per year, why would you keep a balance in this fund?
It kind of a, I guess, a twofold rationale behind not running it down to zero. One was in case, I don't know, we had a just ridiculously brutal winter, and we had to do a lot of emergency repairs to roads. There'll be some money in here, just like, I guess, contingency, if you will. And then the second thing would be, you know, if the policy call is to run it down every year, we can certainly do that. But moving it up to 200,000 would start drawing down of that balance every year, and then five or six years, it would be out of money.
But even doing that, you're leaving 450,000 in the account, which is just drawing interest. Why not spend it on a road project, assuming we have a legitimate project, rather than delaying a year and its costs go up of asphalt and everything else?
Sure. I don't see that there's any problem.
I think that's a philosophical decision for the board to make.
There'll be a policy call.
I got a question. Is this money part of that $10 million, if I keep hearing about? Or this is something separate?
Something separate. I think that, I think you ought to hold that question until next week, when Dave Graff is here and ask him that question. He's our CIP guy and would have a better answer for you than any of us would.
But I think it's philosophical for the board to decide whether you want to keep this cash balance, or you want to spend it down to zero on a yearly basis, assuming the cost of projects go up on a yearly basis. Because you're only going to make, I don't know, how much we make in interest on our investments right now?
Springfield, the Illinois funds is paying us .1. Most of the arrangements we have with the banks is 10 basis points above that, which we .2. My TSCA bank is a little nicer to us than that, but significantly less than the 2% you mentioned before. Everything we have right now, save CDs, is less than 1%.
This is the only area that I have this philosophy on, but when it's on capital projects, I think you should spend it down to zero and do as much as you can, assuming prices are going up on a yearly basis.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we should leave some in there because obviously, this year, we had a major water main break on Irving Park Road that buckled the road, and I don't know where we ended up paying for that out of. I think we should keep some fund balance in here to circumstances like that, because I don't know what that costs. I can't remember the price, but it cost us a pretty penny to repair that Irving Park Road. So I think there should be some reserve money in here regardless. I agree with you, we should maybe take it down more for road projects. But again, I still say you need to leave something in there for in case emergency that we had. I mean, we buckled that road, and we does buckle the road on in front of Target, too, I believe. So, I mean, we repairing that in-house, but the one on Irving Park Road in front of Christie's there, we had contracted that out, and that was a quite bit of penny. And that still ain't fixed the correct way. We got to go back and redo it, part of it. So I would suggest that we leave some of it in there. I agree with you in some part, take it down a little more, but we need to leave something in there for that occasion.
Question from Mr. Kramer or Mr. Wilson? That water main in front of Christie's, where did that money come from? General fund, road and bridge, water maintenance? How did that work?
Water and sewer utilities restoration.
So when we get to that fund, we may have 500,000 sitting there also for emergencies such as this, or, I mean, when we get to it, we'll see, but... Because I understand, I personally, you know, like the mayor, would like to bring it down a little bit, but, you know, what emergencies would come up where we need this money? If there really is no emergency that we're taking this, then why not put it in the CIP? I know we already have, I believe, $2 million extra, or $3 million in the CIP. So, you know, we might be holding some projects back, especially even this coming year, and we could be getting them done, because, let's face it, the economy's tough. I'm sure the bids are going to come in aggressive. The more we can get at the cheaper price, the better off we're going to be in the long run.
Can we do what the mayor said, just hold it till Dave Graff comes back?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I... Alderman calls.
I think we should take it down, but we shouldn't take it out, because we only have one actual bridge that we have to worry about, and that's the bridge on Elizabeth Drive. And that, could never tell how many, that's been quite a few years of being built, and we probably have to, besides painting it, we probably have to have some maintenance pretty soon that might be where we have to change something in it. So we have to keep some money in the bridge fund. We have to keep some in there. Now, we can take a couple, 100,000, 200,000, without even batting an eye, or 250,000, but we should at least keep 250,000 in there.
All right. Anybody else? Alderman Lewis?
Mr. Kramer, can those, can those monies just be transferred between funds? You know, if the water and sewer restoration fund needed more money than it had in it for an emergency, could money be immediately transferred from the road and bridge fund and vice versa?
I'm going to defer to Brad Wilson on this. I don't think so.
Yeah, transfer from the road and bridge fund into the water fund, to the best of my understanding?
I'm picking that only because of the Irving Park rupture, and it was, the question was asked by one of the other aldermen, where did that money come from? If it didn't come from this road and bridge fund, and the answer was water and sewer fund. So therefore, in many people's minds, they could have come from either fund because they were multi-dimensional, involved in restoration. So can money just flow back and forth between them as necessity dictates?
Like I said, my understanding of, you know, the relationship between a special revenue fund and an enterprise fund is that they, they're not to be commingled in any essence.
Are these enterprise funds?
No, this is a special revenue fund. So this money, by definition, can only be used for that special source, which in this case is road and bridge maintenance. But to your question, which I think is where you're going with, could that repair of Irving Park Road have been taken out of this account? Certainly it could. If you see under the fifth line, under contractual services, said road resurfacing and repair, and we have $15,000 in there, road patching due to utility restoration, we could certainly take these, I guess, unexpected ones where, you know, Irving Park were to come apart, or if one of them lets loose underneath Wooddale Road, something like that, we could certainly take those special, the special ones, just the kind of not your run-of-the-mill ones, out of this road and bridge fund without any repercussions from an accounting or audit standpoint. But a transfer wouldn't be appropriate. However, you could just expense it straight away out of here if you wanted to.
Okay. So if you wanted to take a couple of contaminated pipes out, then the road surfacing could be done from the road and bridge fund?
The, yeah, the road surface itself could be the underlying infrastructure, the pipes would have to come out of the enterprise fund that they service out of the water fund, the pipes themselves.
I thought you said they were special funds, not enterprise funds.
Well, the water and sewer mains would be part of the enterprise fund, because they service the water and sewer system, either the potable water or the storm or the sanitary sewer.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be an enterprise fund expense. However, fixing the road surface by too much product on top of those pipes could come out of here, correct?
You're actually talking about three funds? You're talking about the road and sewer, the road and bridge, you're talking about the water and sewer, and now you're talking about the enterprise fund for water?
Correct.
Okay.
Because if you were to do it and break it out by function, if you will, it would require funding from each of those three funds to do it if you were to break it out and stratify them in their purest form.
Thank you. Good answer.
Alderman Wesley?
I have a question on natural gas utilities. It says Royal Oaks gas lights. Is that through the association, or those, how did that come about?
I think I answered this one last year, and I think I looked at the mayor. But as I recall, this one has been in agreement for some time, and we have always picked up the gas service for that while Royal Oaks maintains the maintenance of those lights.
Have we ever, if you don't mind?
Actually, this predates me, so I don't know if I know the answer to that one. But I assume at some point, the streets were dedicated to the city, and they're our responsibility, and those are the lights are in the center of the median of the streets.
And, can I go on? In that case, with our franchise agreement with ComEd, like for lights here, do we have a franchise agreement with Nycor Gas to, that they would pick that up possibly?
The only franchise agreement that I am aware of, unless the manager knows otherwise, is for this building that the administration and the police occupy. There's no agreement outside of this building. The ComEd one, we also have a franchise agreement that covers the bills for this building, and then there's the different costing out of the wooden poles versus the metal poles and stuff like that with ComEd. But to my knowledge, the only franchise agreement with Nycor is just for this particular building and the terms used in this building.
Is this something that's talked about during the finance committee, or to enter to an agreement with Nycor, a franchise agreement possibly, or no? Is that a legal question?
You're talking about Nycor giving it to us for free?
Or a discounted rate? We have an agreement with them, a franchise agreement.
All right. The manager's saying we should check with legal. I mean, you could probably ask Pat before the next meeting and see where we should bring it. All right. Alderman Shawky?
Yeah, this may be a stretch, but we're talking about the road and bridge fund, and by the sound of it, I'm just wondering, we've talked about making the Irving Park Road Bridge wider for the sidewalk, putting an extension on the outside. Is something like that possible with this fund, or is that not within the limits? You know, it sounds like a strange fund, road and bridge fund. Maybe, can you fix a bridge? I mean, can you, it says restoration, utility operations. I don't know.
Sure. I'd have to check to see if that would be under the purview of what we could do. The one thing I would caution on that is that Irving Park is not our road. So anything we would do, we'd have to get approved by the state first. You know, so I guess if the state, you know, goes along with it, we could see if we could use these funds for that. I don't know, unfortunately, I don't have an answer right now for you, but I can certainly find out. As I said, we'd have to have the state go along with it.
Something we've been talking about for quite a while. I know the mayor's talked about it, and if it's possible to get state approval, it sounds like it might work. Thank you.
Mayor Joanna?
Just out of curiosity, is this the money we receive from Addison Township?
The, that's the third line down, the replacement tax, that 2,500, that is the money that we receive from Addison Township.
That's the extent of what we get out of their road and bridge tax collections?